To call the order, the city council meeting for February 25, 2025. The time is now seven o'clock PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation. Okay, first item is roll call.
Mayor Scott Nickel.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Frank Gertner. Councilmember Adam Dyer.
Here.
Councilmember Susan Romi.
Here.
Okay, we will skip down to additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda, if any. Does anyone in council have any change? Next is presentations, proclamations, and introductions. We have two tonight. First is the Irish American Heritage Month proclamation. Is there anyone here representing that group? Seeing none, we will sign that and we will present that to them. All right, next is Police Officer of the Year presentation. Chief Butler.
Evening, council. First of all, let me just thank you for allowing us to have some opportunity to do this. I think this is a big deal that we do. I know every city doesn't do this, but I think it's a great opportunity for you guys to understand what some of our officers are doing and give them a chance to get this recognition in front of many in the city. So, this year, 2024, was another outstanding year for the Indian Harbor Beach Police Department. We had a lot of officers do a lot of great things. In a small agency, we have to wear many hats. You can't just focus on one thing. You've got to kind of be well-rounded. Everyone's kind of got to step up and do many different things, and we had a lot of officers that do that this year. As they say, we can only have one, right? One Officer of the Year. So, this year, I'm very pleased to announce that 2024, our Officer of the Year is Corey Stacy. You can get this guy to smile. So, I'll just read you his nomination. Officer Corey Stacy began his career with the Indian Harbor Police Department in 2021. He's only been here a very short time. Bringing with him knowledge and experience he gained while working at the Bavar County Sheriff's Office Corrections as his corrections officer. We stole them from the sheriff's office. Just under three years with the Indian Harbor Beach Police Department, Officer Corey Stacy has demonstrated positive leadership, dedication, and a positive impact to the operations of the department. He was selected as the department's training officer and instructs TASER and assists in other department training topics. Corey Stacy is Officer Phil Training Officer and participates in the training and mentorship of newly hired officers. He is known to be dependable officer and known for making well-informed decisions. Corporal Stacy's patrols efforts have led to multiple narcotics and DUI arrests, and he consistently maintains some of the highest stats in the department. During Corporal Stacy's actions and proactive policing in the neighborhoods, he recently was able to respond quickly to reports of individuals breaking into vehicles. After a brief vehicle foot pursuit, not vehicle pursuit, we don't do vehicle pursuits here, foot pursuits, Corporal Stacy and his squad was able to apprehend the suspects. Corporal Stacy's rapport with the suspects in this case contributed to the willingness where the detectives, the responding detectives were able to attain a confession, not only in our case, but in other cases in the surrounding areas. Lastly, Corey Stacy is well-liked and respected by every member of the department. He inspires confidence and promotes a culture of professionalism and trust. He also is willing to lend in help in hand and take on additional responsibilities. His leadership, dedication, and commitment to both his colleagues and the community are deserving of this recognition. For these reasons, Corporal Stacy has been selected as the 2024 Officer of the Year. Congratulations. He also just recently took part in the promotional process where he passed one of my written exams. Everyone says those are very difficult, so he is on the list for promotion for the sergeant's exam. Congratulations. Anything you want to say, Corey?
We've got a train. We've got a train.
Go ahead, Corey.
Thank you all for this opportunity. I appreciate earning this award. I think our whole agency, everybody does a fantastic job. And continue to improve and stay with the agency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is approval of the regular council meeting minutes from February 11, 2025. Does anyone in council have any corrections? Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Deputy Mayor Gertner, second by Councilmember Dyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. On to reports. First is City Manager's Report. City Manager Coffey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Residents gathered here watching at home, city council members. Few updates, Capitol Project updates. The FY24 Playground Replacement Project for Orbits and Paddles was recently completed. However, when we went to pay the bill, we realized we did not roll that budget forward last November, so the $55,000 cost will be transferred out of the City Manager's contingency account. That contingency tracker is attached. Additionally, when it rains, it pours. The FY24 Pool Sand Filter Sand Replacement Project was, we signed a quote for $12,000, and that project did not roll forward. Money is available in contingency. The FY25 Fence Replacement Project in the Alkonquin Sports Complex for the large field, I signed a bid for $36,000 recently. The $3,000 and change savings will be transferred back to the City Manager's contingency account. Recently, we signed a quote for additional cameras and upgrades for the police department. This is partly to meet accreditation standards and to replace camera and microphones in the interviews rooms that have been insufficient for audio recordings. We've not had to take money out of contingency for this project because Chief Butler identified available funding within his department that will be transferred to the Capitol Project Department. The Network Switch Replacement Project, FY25 Project, was recently completed with a savings of $3,800, which will be transferred to the contingency account. Beginning this Thursday, residents can register their vehicles for free beach parking at www.parkindianharborbeach.com or go to the PCI office on A1A. Residents can register up to two vehicles online. Additional vehicles, they can either email or go to the site. This is in preparation of the parking program starting on March 31st. I will be placing on the agenda for our next meeting on March 11th, an agenda item just to make sure everyone is on the page of how we define residents for free parking. We've been having some feedback from part-time residents over how staff has set up the program, so I just try to prevent folks from feeling they have to come here to complain, get ahead of it, so that'll be on the next agenda. In addition, staff reviewed the signs at both parks, identifying some ways to reduce sign clutter out there, in addition to new signs going up for the paid parking. Property appraisal update. Recently, Preferred Government Insurance Trust, the city's liability and workers' comp insurance company, provided appraisal of city property and building content and identified a $1.4 million shortfall in our insured value. I signed a quote for $9,500 to cover that, so we're fully insured. Once again, transferred that money from contingency account. We recently released two requests for proposals, one for construction of the partly state appropriations-funded City Hall baffle box, and the other for a comprehensive plan update. Those close on March 26 and March 14, respectfully. We anticipate consideration of award of contracts scheduled for the April 22 council meeting. The November, December, and January revenue and expenditure reports are attached regarding the most recent January report. General Fund revenues total 8.1 million or 51% of the budget, and expenditures are 3.9 million or 25%. Stormwater fund revenues are 308,000 or 93% of budget, and expenditures are 381,070% of the budget. ARPA expenditures equal 186,000 or 10% of the budget. Legislative update, the biweekly tracker was emailed out to you and is in front of you regarding recent special sessions. The bill that came out of this second special session was vetoed by Governor DeSantis on February 2nd. The bill coming out of the third special session was signed by Governor DeSantis on the 13th. I provided a summary from the Florida League of Cities. I will not read that in detail. It is available on our website. Lastly, employee recognition. Police Chief Butler received a letter of appreciation from a resident about enforcing speed limits on A1A, stating that he wished all cities were like IHB. And the tentative agendas for the next meeting is the oath of office for new council members, selection of mayor and deputy mayor, which is a charter requirement whenever we fill a vacancy, a tree preservation board reappointment, renewal of the inter-local agreement for the creation of Space Coast TPO, and that discussion item about paid parking. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is City Attorney's Report. The attorney is not present tonight, so we can move on to council comments, starting with Deputy Mayor Gertner.
The only comment I have is glad to see such a big crowd here. And, you know, Indian Harbor works for the police, works for the residents, works for everything. It's just a different type of city. So, you're welcome all the time to come and bring your people. We have a good outlook towards our police, and so does our residents. That's it.
Councilmember Romi.
Just want to start by saying that last week, there was, as we all know, a big fire right near where I live, and pretty quickly, Chief Butler was there immediately, the Indian Harbor Beach Fire Department. They handled it so amazing. You know, there were a lot of residents, and I just thought you guys did a great job. Also, want to say we had this small business beach expo that I went to, and that was a great community event. Okay, let's see. Also, want to thank everyone for the donations the staff and advisory boards gave to the Ocean Breeze Shelter Outreach, and I guess that'll do it for now.
Councilmember Dyer.
Just wanted to second, it was a very good event, the Small Business Expo at Gleason Park, so good job for orchestrating that. I appreciate that, Mr. Nutt, and that's all I had to say.
Okay. The only thing I have to say is it's Councilmember Dyer's birthday tonight.
Welcome.
You mean to sing, you said?
You seem happy you're still celebrating.
Okay, next is public comments on agenda items only. If anybody from the public wishes to speak, come up. You'll have three minutes to speak. Seeing none, we'll move along. There's no unfinished business. We go on to new business, item number five, which is appointment of a qualified city elector to fill the unexpired council member, council member seat number two, previously held by Councilmember Emeritus Boone. This is to consider selecting a qualified elector from six, maybe four residents, actually. I think two dropped out. Four residents who submitted resumes and letters of interest to fill the unexpired term of Councilmember seat number two. City Manager Coffey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As you stated, we have four remaining candidates. Each candidate will be allowed three minutes to address the council, followed by a question that I will ask each of the candidates. After they have all taken their turn, they will return to this room to where it will come back to you and the city council to any possible discussion, and then vote. For those in the audience or watching at home who may be unfamiliar with this process, the council will vote a ranked system on a piece of paper, which eventually becomes a public document. And so, that vote will be tallied, and then the person with the top score will be announced, and hopefully, the council will make a motion, a second, to appoint that person that will conclude this. If by some chance the council does not reach a conclusion tonight, we have a limited number of days to fill the seat before a special election has to be called. So unless there's any questions of the city council, Mr. Bond will be first up, so sir, you don't have to leave the room, but Ms. Broschu, Ms. Hume, and Mr. Nutt, if you will follow Nikki upstairs, and she will let you know when it's time to come downstairs. Mr. Bond, you are welcome to come on up, and please state your name and address, and you have three minutes to address the council.
Okay. Hopefully, everybody can hear me now. Thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity here, but it comes under sad circumstances. Ham Boone. Oh, yes, it's Paul Bond, and it's 511 Luther Lane in, of course, Indian Harbor Beach. Ham Boone was my neighbor, and he was, you know, will be dearly missed in our neighborhood. He was a person that everybody, you know, knew that he would be there for in times of need, and he was just always somebody that was always there to greet you, whether it was when I walked by with my dogs in the morning, or it was just, you know, needed help moving a trailer or something else, a boat trailer or whatever. So, it's a sad circumstance that we're, you know, having to go through this right now. I come to you, I moved here in 2018 after a 30-year career up in Erie, Pennsylvania. Built a family business manufacturing medical devices, and I feel, after six years now of living here and essentially being retired, that I want to give back to the community. I want to be able to do things here and bring my skills and things that would help our community and, you know, make, you know, continue to make this a great place to live. I moved here because I really loved the fact that we're on the Space Coast. I think that's great. But this community in particular is a nice, small community. It seems very family-oriented. It seems safe, and these are all things that, at the time, my family and I really looked for where we were going to move. I didn't really prepare a whole lot more than that, so I'm a little short of the three minutes, but I asked for your vote and am happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
John, you have the question.
Mr. Bond, in your opinion, what are the three most important priorities for the city?
Well, I think obviously safety is one of those priorities, and I see that tonight with, you know, the police presence and, you know, honoring, you know, the contributions of the police force and the fire department of recent fire. I think those are, you know, that's one of the primary things. I'm very passionate about the waterways, and I'm, especially on the canal that I live on, you know, see the detriment that's happened to the lagoon, and, you know, very wanting to get involved in trying to find a solution to, you know, what's going on there. In addition to that, I just think that, you know, continuing the traditions of the council and the traditions of Indian Harbor Beach and, you know, maintaining a, you know, safe and fantastic place for us to live is the top priority. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I go upstairs now? Okay, thank you.
This is the time I realized I should have had some elevator music or something to pause the time.
Sing "Happy Birthday."
Yeah, we could sing "Happy Birthday."
Each time.
Each time. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Ready? Good evening. I'm Katie Broschu, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Sure. I live at 2065 Highway A1A, Unit 1402, Indian Harbor Beach. I guess I should say, is it Jimmy Buffett Memorial Highway now? I should get updated. I offer my sincere thanks to each and every one of you for allowing me to be before you here this evening as a potential candidate to fulfill the unexpired term of Councilmember seat number two. My husband and I purchased our home here more than 20 years ago, and we love this fabulous beachside community. I appreciate the strong, steady visionary leadership that this council has provided throughout all those years and long before. Throughout my career, I have served in many capacities in a variety of organizations, including education, business, and consulting. I have been an active member of communities wherever I have lived and volunteered for numerous roles. Throughout my service, I have provided insightful, prepared, understanding, positive, and collegial outlook. I'm honored to serve currently on the Indian Harbor Beach Police Pension Board, and I've done so since 2021. And I will say, it's masterfully led by our own Chief Butler. In addition, I have had the honor of serving in numerous national, state, local boards and have, excuse me, presided over numerous. If selected for this seat, I pledge to join you in your endeavor to continue the work that has made this community an exceptional place to live, to work, to raise our children, and to support our elderly, providing safety, fiscal management, environmental protection, communication, and accessibility, I believe, is paramount. And I will be committed to focusing on these efforts in concert with this council. I assure you that I will dedicate the necessary time, energy, attention, to be fully prepared for all of the city council's work, including meeting preparation, attending events, and community outreach. The quality of this magical beachside community we call home are remarkable and endless. Our city enjoys a small-town feel that grows close relationships, common interests, enormous pride, and respect. If I'm selected to join you as a member of the Indian Harbor Beach City Council.
Sorry, I have to cut you off. I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine.
Okay.
In your opinion, what are the three most important priorities for the city?
I will say, having a vision for the future that is completely understood and permeates throughout the entire community. I believe communication and finding the way to communicate not only what we stand for, but why we are using the resources that we currently have, and perhaps any additional resources that are needed to make our community even better. And the third thing I would say is that, along with those two, you need to have strong leadership and commitment from not only the leadership of the community, but also our entire citizenry. And with that, offering opportunities for involvement, getting more people to come out and understand and be a part of the great things that are constantly happening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If we celebrate Councilmember Dyer's birthday every time, he's aging a lot tonight. State your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay, I'm Shawna Hume, and I reside at 1007 Flotella Club Drive here in Indian Harbor Beach. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council- Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. I can tell you the exact day and time when I moved into my home in Indian Harbor Beach because my daughter was born the very same day. Talk about multitasking. Raising our family here has been a blessing that I am grateful for every day. Faith, family, friendships and community are important to me. As most of you know, I retired from the city of Indian Harbor Beach in 2020 after 25 years of working as executive assistant to city managers Jackie Burns and Mark Ryan. They were awesome mentors and I learned so much. After enjoying retirement for three years, I was unanimously appointed by the previous council, two of which members are here tonight and thank you for coming, for your support. I was to serve the unexpired term of the late Dave Pannacola. I believe I was appointed by the previous council because they all knew I was capable, caring, ethical and with extensive knowledge on the history of the city. I didn't have to go through any kind of learning curve. I could just jump right up there and get into the city's work. I know the rules and regulations that we're bound by and how our city engages on the county, state and federal levels as well. I now have the unique perspective of serving the citizens of our city on both sides of the dais. I know the hard work admin and employees put in on the day-to-day operations of the city and preparing information for council to review. I also fully appreciate a newfound appreciation for the time and effort council members put in. There have been nights when we've reviewed agenda package that thick. It requires a lot of dedication and time to read and study and attend a special called meetings and workshops. It is a labor of love because it is a volunteer job. Volunteering has always been important to me. And from the days of Ocean Breeze to my current 20 years of service volunteering at the King Center for the Performing Arts. After losing the election in November by a narrow margin, I had earned 49.2% of the votes cast. I was encouraged by many residents to apply for appointment tonight. And I want to congratulate Susan again on your win. On June 6th of this year is the 70th anniversary of our city's incorporation and I hope to continue to serve the city in the future. Thank you. Thank you.
You have any questions?
In your opinion, what are the three most important priorities for the city?
Okay. I think these are going to be very challenging times with unknown budget issues on the state and federal level. Funding is always something where we are, we have excellent staff who's researching grants, but we don't know how that's going to play out. I also, I believe in the basics of government. I believe in drainage, infrastructure, roads, paving, the basics of government. It's nice when we can do other fluffy stuff, but I think we have to maintain what we have and that's an important consideration. And I just, yeah, those type of things are most important to me. We also on a city level, what people may not know is that we also fund the improvement to the Indian River Lagoon, which is important. It's not just city stuff that we spend our taxpayers' money on. So I think it's important to know, you know, how to discuss these things and make priorities in our budget. So thank you very much for your time and consideration tonight. Good night.
Thank you.
The last birthday gag is unfortunate. Please state your name and address and you have three minutes.
105 Inona Place. Oh, yeah, Shawna was here. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. First, I want to extend my heartfelt condolences to the family of Councilmember Hamilton Boone. Ham was more than a public servant. He was my friend and my VA advocate. He actively advised me on Veterans Affairs and for that, I am very grateful to this day. His service to this community will not be forgotten. For those of you that don't know me, I am a lifelong member of this community. I was born in Indian Atlantic on First Avenue. I grew up right here on beachside. I attended Sea Park Elementary, Delora, graduated Satellite. Coach Gerton was my football coach. This is my home and I have a vested interest in this community. I'm a veteran of both the Army and the Air Force. Following my military service, I spent over 20 years in the tech sector and management. I'm also a small business owner and I understand firsthand the challenges our local businesses have. More than two years ago, I ran for council seat here. When I didn't win, I remained involved. I'm currently serving on the Planning and Zoning Board. I've attended nearly every city council meeting, workshop and tree preservation board meetings. I believe in being engaged, not just when it's easy, but when it matters most. Also have a great admiration for our volunteer fire department. While my disability prevents me from serving as a volunteer firefighter, I found another way to contribute. I created the annual Indian Harbor Beach Small Business Expo, an event that raises money and awareness to support our volunteers. This is what service means to me, finding ways to give back no matter the circumstances. So tonight, I asked the city council to consider me for the open vacancy. And I believe my experience and my commitment and my deep roots in the community make me ready and willing to serve. I'm stepping forward because I have the experience and I'm already engaged with our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have a question for you.
In your opinion, what are the three most important priorities for the city?
Well, right now, I know that we need to get through the Algonquin Complex addition that we're dealing with right now. I'd like to see us get through that without any hiccups. I'm very familiar with the fact that our beach parking is, it caused some rift, but I'm pretty sure it's going to be seamless. But we need to make sure that if there's anything that's going to rise out of that, that we need to be able to head it off at the pass and not be late to that as far as answering the needs of the city. The other thing I want to make sure of is that when it comes to, financially, by far, we are one of the best cities when it comes to making sure that we stay in the black in the entire state. But as far as other issues that come up, I would like to think that we tried to take advantage of the $30,000 that we spent on the software to identify short-term rentals and we need to take advantage of that. And mainly the reason behind that is because every time a new short-term rental shows up, that's a family that's not in that house. And every time there's not a family in that house, that means there's no kids in our schools. And the less seats or butts in seats in our school, we lose that school. We lose funding. So I want to make sure that we see that, we seen it in our budget and our, because the majority of our taxes go to the school and we see a decline in the copulation of our children. So I want to make sure that it stays a priority and take advantage of that.
You can have a seat. All of the others come down. Last call for birthday comments.
Happy birthday. If I, if I could sing, I'd sing. But I can't sing. Maybe our mayor can sing. Is that right, Mayor? Thank you.